Coverage of the Oxford area with these new routes, and hopefully more efficient and useful to passengers. And we're also going to introduce this new interlining concept. And that is that you stay on one bus, but you can go to two disconnected communities. So in this, this map here, we have the O1 and the O2 in orange. So the idea is, you know, you, you, you might start off at Chestnut Fields in, as the bus pulls out from the facility, it's, it's starting off as O1, comes back as O1, and then it goes out as O2, comes back as O2. And so we're, we're helping folks connect from this area to this disconnected area as well, and, and vice versa. All right. I already mentioned this. We're still going to be serving Walmart, but it was just in the evenings and weekends, and this is just due to ridership. Any questions?
I'm sure we do. I have a question.
Yep.
I'll just start us off is, this is the routes for the school year that primarily service Miami University students. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is there any intention of serving other people in the community, particularly during the summer? I know that what I've heard so many times is that if a route were to go through the park and go by the Aquatic Center, that that would be helpful for a lot of people in town. I'm wondering whether there is any intention to do anything at all during the summer, or whether you just close up shop for three months.
Hmm. Good question. Um, I haven't really thought that through.
Well, no, I'm sorry. I don't have a great answer for you, but I do at least have some sort of an answer. So we don't close up shop. We go to a summer schedule, of course, during non-summer, we have a summer, spring, or summer, winter, fall and spring schedule for Miami University. And of course, the routes are free for the students, but they're also free for the community to ride. But part of this is looking for that type of feedback. And that's, that's what we're looking for.
Well, that's my feedback.
Yeah. No, that's great. And we would love, you know, if you could fill out the survey and, and to hear what the community does desire to have, because, you know, a lot of people have a lot of different opinions, so this is where we, we would like to hear those, those types of things, so we can take that into consideration.
I think you do fairly good coverage for different parts of town, if, if one understands the bus routes. And I, the line is much better than the loop, so good job on that. But there are people who live here in this town 12 months a year, and they would like to use the bus, but are unable to do so because it's still on a student route in the summer. And I think that some adaptations could be made in the summer to accommodate people who go to our community park.
Yes. I think that's great feedback.
Maybe some other places, but that's the main one that I think of.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Well, I, I would thank, you know, one of the things is it's, it's wonderful to have this conversation, because it was not that long ago that Oxford lacked any public transfer at all. Miami used to operate a functionally private, you know, I don't know if you guys remember the, the school buses.
Miami Metro, yeah.
Miami Metro that was only open to students. And so what we have now is a public service that's not only open to all residents, but is free for all residents. And so we're very, very fortunate. I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that the, that the service, the operations are still funded 100% by student fees with no part, you know, contribution from the city of Oxford. So if the, if the routes are designed to serve the students, I think that that's how that is. And I, and I, I've looked at these routes and, yeah, like, yeah, I mean, there are parts of town on the west side, it would be really, really, really wonderful to have bus access, for example, to things like the park, but the, you know, it's, it's kind of ridership-driven and, and where the people are going. I, I would love to see that. I think it might take a commitment from the city of Oxford to partner, to, to see service that would specifically meet our needs. But it sounds like you guys are open to suggestions and feedback.
Yes, sir.
So, so thank you for sharing that.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that.
Are there other questions or comments? Mike?
I was just going to say, having a student employee that lives in Hawks Landing, I, I've heard this statement before about, you know, he's new to bus riding and figuring out the buses, so I think that'll be a welcome change for that into town.
And we do offer a lot of services that people aren't aware of, and we do work with the university. We do travel training. We absolutely can get out there and help people ride the bus. We ride along with them. We can teach them the routes, how to plan their routes, what they need to look for. So there are additional services available to get over those hurdles, because, you know, we, we, we aren't in a metropolis, so a lot of students do come without any bus knowledge. And so it can be overwhelming when you don't know what you're doing.
So is currently the best app, is the Transit app?
Yep. Yes, sir.
So the Transit app, if you don't have it on your phone, is really an amazing app that basically, it's at least nationwide, but also perhaps, you know? So it's one app that will allow you navigate transit in any city, you know? And so it has all the GPS functionality that, of knowing when a bus is coming, and if it's late, and, and you can put it just like Google Maps to know where you're going. So yeah, for those people who are not maybe savvy to read a bus schedule, the Transit app is super easy to use.
We do get a lot of usage in Miami University with the Transit app, for sure. We get monthly updates on the most popular routes, how often the, the app is opened, all those types of metrics. And it's usually the U1 and U4 always seem to be the most popular. So students do catch on in time.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. And we did leave some cards, I believe everybody probably took one, but it has a QR code. If we could get as many people to, you know, fill out the survey and help us understand what the community needs, it certainly would make our job a lot easier.
And it was linked in the, the city, like, if they, people on the newsletter that they received yesterday, it includes a link to the BCRTA.
Yes, yes. They've been very helpful. Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we will welcome any comments from the public on items which do not appear on the agenda, or if they're part of the consent agenda. You can address them now, those issues. If it has, if you have a comment on something that is on the agenda, just wait, and, and when we get to it, we will recognize people at that time. Is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? Okay. Thank you very much. Then we will move to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do any items need to be removed for discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution declaring that it is necessary to improve those portions of certain properties as shown on Exhibit A attached here too, in the city of Oxford, Ohio, by repaving, recurving, and repairing the sidewalks, curbs, and gutters.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike, we're going to keep you up here for a while.
Yes, sir. It's good to be here.
You have several of these.
Good evening.
So take us through this one, please.
This is our typical curb gutter sidewalk program that we do in advance of resurfacing throughout the town. So this is the first of four pieces of legislation necessary for this special assessment program. The first is this one, a resolution of necessity. We'll put all the property owners on notice by certified mail of their obligation to make repairs. Technically, they have 30 days to complete the repairs. Obviously, the weather conditions are not conducive to that. We will offer extensions to that for a reasonable period, I believe, to May 3rd.
Okay.
That will still give us time to assemble a contract and hopefully get the work done prior to paving, and still give the property owners as much time as possible to meet their obligation on their end. We'll follow that up with a resolution of actual costs once the work is performed, and then finally, a, a assessment ordinance to put the charges to property taxes.
Okay.
Glad you answered any questions.
All right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay. Thank you. Counselors, have any questions or comments?
If you've walked any of those streets, you can see just how much they are in need of repair. I walk Ridge and Field Crest, and Ridge is just crumbling. And so it's, it's a great thing that these streets are going to be repaved. But looking at the assessments, I mean, I, I'm grateful to property owners for partnering with the city by doing their portion of it. These are not insignificant costs, but when, with the city partnering with property owners, we can get more streets paved, and we have a really wonderful sidewalk system. But, you know, I just want to express my gratitude, because I think that anyone on a street like that, you know, you, it's, it's a, not an insignificant thing that they have to do between the curb and gutter and sidewalk. So I want to thank them and thank the city.
Thank you, David. Anyone else?
Yes. Mike, can you please run down again the timeline, because there's been some email bubbling up in our neighborhood. We're seeing the, the white dots on sidewalks and curbs. So at what point do the property manager, the property owners know how much the city would cost? And at what point should they start deciding to perhaps bundle and go with a different contractor?
Sure. Right now, the, the white marks you might find on your sidewalk or curb are worked, worked done by the engineering division to put the plan together of what's defective and assembling a list of property owners that we need to put on notice. So, once council approves the resolution, hopefully this evening, we will send certified letters to the property owners, and we will give our best estimate of costs. Property owners will likely be able to get lower pricing, especially if they do bundle, because they will not have to face prevailing wages and do things in the manner that the city has to do them. We'll give you a deadline in the letter, in the letter of notice. It'll be 30 days from when we send them. But again, we know the weather conditions are not conducive to work right now, and we will offer extensions up to about May 3rd.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, we'll move to number B.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Motorola Solutions for the purchase of replacement portable two-way radios and associated equipment at a cost not to exceed $142,884.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike?
So we bought our first batch of radios over 25 years ago. So we've had great service from them in that time. Out of the first 55, I think we've only had two that needed repairs. So we're very pleased with them. They're almost indestructible. They will be technologically obsolete and not supported beginning in July. So Butler County Communications is totals, they will no longer support them, and they just won't work anymore. So initially, we had over 50. We do a lot of our work by cellphone now, which was a luxury back in the day. So we're reducing our order down to 40 radios, and I believe that's sufficient for us. These are on state contract, and we'll look for your approval tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Questions from council? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, we'll move to the third.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated to allow access for proposed construction of a new pedestrian bridge over CSXT milepost BD 38.3 in Oxford, Ohio, at a cost not to exceed $248,255.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike?
This resolution, along with the next three, have to do with Oaks Trail Phase 5. As you know, we just completed Phases 3 and 4. This Phase 5 will connect the high school to the middle school, and also have a northern connector up to the new Chestnut Fields facility and the proposed Amtrak platform and the city sidewalk network at Main and Chestnut. As part of this project, in this Phase 5, we need to build a pedestrian bridge over CSX land and right-of-way. It's the most one-sided agreement today you could ever try to write. The city has to absorb all of the costs with anything that remotely could happen with this construction. We're required to deposit with CSX the amount led by the clerk, and CSX will draw against that amount for expenses as the city and CSX approve them. But we have to post that with them. We will work hard to minimize our costs. We will try to do as much work outside of the CSX right-of-way as possible. So then, when it does come time to set beams and, and be in their airspace, we will try to minimize our costs.
So if we are in their right-of-way, then they do the work, or they?
They, they manage and inspect the work, and they're slowing down their trains. They will have flaggers at both, both sides of the project limits. They will be doing their own construction inspection, making sure that our work does not have an impact on the integrity of their rails.
I'm sure they will.
And all of that will be on the Oaks great payer dime.
Okay.
But we have no choice in the matter. If we want to complete this phase of the project, we'll need to make that deposit and get your approval for this contract.
And, and this part of the trail was funded by the state of Ohio. Is that correct?
Jessica Green has gotten over $3 million in grants for this phase, much of it from OKI going through ODOT.
Okay. But as well, is the state appropriation awesome?
Okay.
There's a $500,000 ODNR grant, I believe, too.
And an $800,000 state capital provision.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay. Thank you. Counselors, have any questions or comments?
I want to thank engineering staff. I know that this takes up a lot of bandwidth, this trail, I mean, this takes up a lot of bandwidth, period. But it's really exciting to see something that was just a kind of a dream and a dotted line, and this is really the most complex portion of it, and we're moving forward, including with difficult negotiations with CSX. So it's, so thank you. It's really exciting.
Okay. All ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, we'll move to number four.
A resolution authorizing payment of $120,000 to Abraham A. Karunga and Yulyn M. Karunga, co-trustees of the Karunga Family Trust dated January 29, 2020, for the acquisition of an easement for the construction of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase 5.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike?
There are 11 parcels involved where we need easements to build Phase 5 of the Oaks Trail. We've come to resolution with nine of the property owners, Karanga being one of them. As this amount is over $50,000, it exceeds our authority to do that on our own. So we're asking for your approval of the agreement and the ability to pay the trust that amount.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay. Thank you. Counselors, have any questions?
Well, this is just a number of property agreements and negotiations, because the trail is outside the public right-of-way. It requires negotiations with property owners. I'm very grateful for those who work with the city on making our trail happen.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Karangas there. If you know them, they're very warm people, really committed to Oxford in several different ways. They don't like a lot of public accolades, but just a debt of gratitude, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Let's go to number five.
A resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other property interests owned by EVR Investments LLC with interest by others for a transportation project for the construction of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase 5.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike?
So as I stated, there were two parcels that we were not able to come to agreement on for a cost for the easements. So we've offered fair market value. The land's been appraised. We're following Ohio Revice Code 163 as far as the procedure to try to move the process along. Tonight, we're asking for your approval of a resolution of necessity. This will allow us to officially put the landowners on notice and follow that with the authorizing ordinance to deposit funds with the Butler County Clerk of Courts and proceeding with either mediation or a jury trial to, to award damages for the value of the tape.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution?
Your honor, if I would?
Yes.
I have a typo in Exhibit A. The text in the-
What page is that on? Do you know?
Second page.
I believe it's 119.
120.
Thank you. It's in the exhibit. I have the correct amount stated in my report, but I have a typo in Exhibit A, and the EVR fair market value is $78,179. And ironically, put $79,179.
All right. Thank you for the creation. All right. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's adopted. We'll move to number six, I guess.
A resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other property interests owned by Laura Osborne Trustee with interest by others for a transportation project for the construction of the Oxford Area Trail System Phase 5.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. Mike?
This is the second of the two property owners where we could not come to an agreement. So again, we're just asking for the approval of a resolution of necessity, so that we can put the property owners on official notice of our intent and what the fair market value is, restating that, and hopefully coming to an agreement at some point.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay.
Hi, I'm Chris Shoper. My wife and I own the real estate question here. It's interesting how we've gotten this far. In 2023, in April of 2023, we saw a very sound plan to cross the railroad tracks, to utilize an existing bridge to cross Collins Creek to access Chestnut Street and the transportation center. Then there was a revision that came across to where, well, we're going to go across one corner of the property, so we can get around to where it will about Karanga's right-of-way that he just is selling you guys. But then, suddenly, back in June of last year, we had a totally different design come apart, come, that was put in place, to where we had surveyors, we had geotechnical engineers, we had Phase 1 environmental studies completed, all without our knowledge to understand exactly where this proposed Chestnut Street access was going to be placed. We didn't have a say in what the city was going to choose to do with our land. I bet you would not like it if I showed up at your house and started cutting through your backyards and taking geotechnical, doing geotechnical work. Not one certificate of insurance from a contractor that was sent on to our real estate, even after we asked that no one go on to our property until we resolved where the path for this proposed bike trail was going to take place. It was just assumed that we would roll over. Now, a bike trail, I don't think we're putting in a four-lane highway, but for some reason, you need 80 and 90 feet to put a 10-foot bike path in. That's not for the purposes solely of construction. That's the total easement. Now, this happens to be located on an area to where the city had done a approved master development plan off of Gardenia Drive. Now, to try to maintain their ADA slope so that they could cross and go down and go across the new gold-plated bridge that's going to connect the south side of the bank of South Collins Creek to the north side of Collins Creek, to go up along the west side of what was formerly the landfill, they're going to cut an eight-foot trench where the right-of-way for Gardenia Drive is going to go through. I saw a sketch on a piece of paper that said, oh, well, we could do it differently. But I didn't see it engineered. I didn't see something that was going to resolve this issue. Two weeks ago, you approve ordinances that will go into effect in March for subdivision development. Part of that is going to be an amendment to the, for the requirements of green space in order to develop property in the city of Oxford. As written underneath this new ordinance, a bike trail, or right-of-way, or any other right-of-way, will not count as part of that green space. So I had a city coming out, doing work on the property, without so much as, hey, this is how we would like to do this. This is the plan. Let's look at some options. And then fully engineering a project before we even have anything on paper. Now, I know taxpayer money's really cheap, but we're throwing a lot of money at something before we even have discussions with property owners, what's going to go on, on their real estate, how it's going to affect our ability to develop our property, to use our land to bring benefit to the city of Oxford.
You've got one minute.
We're desperate for housing in town. The city is now in the development game. You're building on Chestnut Street, you're getting ready to start Habitat off of Hester Road. God only knows what else is coming. You've got 47 acres that you've been sitting on forever over off of 732. I think it's possible that if we'd had conversations ahead of time, we could have incorporated a bike trail into a community like House Landing. I thought that was wonderful. They did a wonderful job with that project. They also, in their infinite wisdom, helped convey the importance of what the cost of development is now for a foot of street. Now, we have a whole bunch of new ordinances that are going to change those rules and change how we do things. And until we can resolve that and look at what we're going to be able to do to secure my family's future, we're not in a position to allow anyone to use our property.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
But I'd like to say something. Can I also say?
Yeah. Just give us your, as before, give us your name and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes. Welcome, Laura.
I live on Stowe Beckett. I'm Laura Osborne. I'm the trustee for this property, which I acquired, I mean, I want you to think about it this way, how I thought about this, think about this property. It is both my future home and my pension. So if someone said, give us a third of your pension, anybody wonder, or a third of your backyard, and had already done architectural drawings to utilize portions of your backyard, it, it, it would come as a bit of a shock. We first met with the city in April 2023. We didn't hear anything. We didn't get sufficient drawings. His background is environmental engineering and development. When you say developers, lots of people have stereotypes, but we wanted to be housing providers. I mean, that, that was sort of the dream. I'm a social worker, he's an environmental engineer. We wanted to do good things for the community and wanted to incorporate the bike trail. But we just didn't get the information from the city. We wouldn't hear anything for long periods of time. I just really want y'all to just take a moment, use your empathic imagination to imagine what it's like, you haven't heard anything for two months, and one day you open up your mailbox, and there's a brochure, when ODOT wants to take your property, that's literally what the brochure says. And I went, I mean, it, it is a, it is a jarring sort of experience. I also want to make it clear what he means when he talks about this trench, okay? The proposal, the original proposal was taking a little bit of a corner, but the, the new proposal is a nine-foot ditch at the end of what is now a street, okay? So this fair market value for an easement for the trench might be, well, I mean, a certain- certain amount of money, but it cuts off 22 lots, essentially rendering the property totally worthless. So when we talk about fair market value, we have to take things like that into consideration, and we were certainly willing to work with the city. Again, we met with them multiple ti, three or four times, I think, since April of 2023, always been open, always wanted to collaborate, language like put property owners on official notice. I understand that language, but as a person who wanted to collaborate, that language and who is looking at the face of essentially losing my pension, that kind of language can be really jarring. So again, we're open to collaborating. Suddenly around, I guess around December, we started getting a flurry of emails and calls without giving us the information like the drawings that we wanted. It felt like a lot of pressure to come to a decision without full information. When we got the drawings, there are very significant problems that really need to be addressed, that will affect the neighborhood, affect our property, and also affect the Coranga property in a, in a negative way. So again, we want to collaborate. We want the bike trail on our property, but we want this done in a way that doesn't cost me my economic future. It impoverish me, so I look forward to actually working together, but we were under the, as we were quite directly told, we've got deadlines. Make a decision quick. And that, after having waited from April 2023 to get, you know, the appropriate drawings and engineering. So I, I hope you don't approach future other property owners with the idea that we haven't been able to come to an agreement because there were calcitrant property owners who don't want to collaborate and connect, rather than maybe exploring some areas of process and procedure that might be refined so that people can collaborate.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to, yes?
Anne Furor, 1345 Dana Drive. I'm on the agenda packet, and I knew what those four white dots on my sidewalk were. I don't want to speak to the resolution, I, that resolution. I understand it and am glad to get those cracks fixed. And the process for doing that is clear. I called the service department and they were very helpful.
Comments about this resolution?
I am getting to that.
All right.
But I, I wanted to provide that context to say, in general, I'm very happy with the work that the city does. I'd like an answer to a particular question relevant to Laura and Chris's situation. We are friends, colleagues, worked together for a long time around tops in affordable housing. Several council meetings ago, Councilor Prithurch, near the end of the meeting, you said, fortunately, we haven't had to invoke eminent domain yet in the progress of the Oath's Trail. I'm wondering what criteria you use to decide when you do need to invoke eminent domain and the legal processes associated with that in a situation like this? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address counsel on this resolution? Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay. Mike, does staff have any comments you'd like to make or? I know that generally speaking, I would encourage the property owners to talk with staff and express your concerns with them, but yes.
Sure. I believe we've followed the correct procedure. We are still open to negotiate and find middle ground where we can. It's difficult when you're dealing with multiple property owners with multiple objectives to get one solution that's going to please everyone. So unfortunately, that's the case here. But again, tonight, we're asking simply for a resolution of necessity. We will continue to work with the two property owners that we need to get easements for. We're not taking right-of-way. These are easements. I won't speak to how that impacts future subdivision regulations, but these are simple easements.
Okay.
So we're hoping to move forward. We do have to certify the right-of-way to ODOT or we do become, there's some risk to losing grant funds or future grant funds.
I understand. Yeah, we are under time urgency. I do hope that we'll take the time to talk with them again and see what we can do to address their concerns.
Certainly.
All right. Is there any discussion by counsel?
I guess I just would ask for a little bit of clarification in terms of the degree of, I mean, one level, there will be negotiations that have been about the price of, of an easement and trying to agree on that, but, but I, I think certainly we hope that the trail complements future development. So to what degree is there flexibility about the alignment of the trails to address the Osborne concern so that what the trail does dovetails with potential future subdivision and, in, in a way? So how much flexibility is that in order to move forward?
Well, it's, uh, not something I'm prepared to discuss tonight. It's a very complicated process of environmental study and as long as we're within the existing scope, yes, we can, we can work on the design. If we're asking to redesign something and it's not been cleared environmentally as of yet, that's, that's not a great option.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there other discussion? You're aware of what this resolution is?
Yes. And I would just express gratitude to all of the property owners, whether, you know, as with the Coranga family, whether a resolution was achieved at this point or whether property owners will be in continued negotiations with the city to try to find a good resolution. As to Dr. Furor's question, I mean, I think to this point, we've been able to build the trail on public lands, but now we're in places which the only way to complete the, the alignment is, is through private property. And so ultimately eminent domain is, is the, the, at the end of the process, and I think ideally a negotiated solution that's fair is something that the city has sought and so, but I, whatever the resolution is, if it impacts people's lands, I think that the voters and the cities, citizens of the city of Oxford are grateful to property owners for, for working with the trail to help make it happen. So thank you.
Are you ready?
Sorry. Just one thing I want to add. I would agree, you know, thank you to the property owners. And I do want to make clear, I think the words eminent domain have happened a lot in this conversation, and I just want to clarify for those in the room, those who may be watching, that this resolution is a kind of bringing people back to the table, facilitating those conversations and moving forward.
It's a notice.
Yeah, exactly. So just wanted to be really clear about what exactly we were voting for tonight.
Yes.
We've heard the, the term bike trail a lot. This is, this is sort of a multimodal trail, like a corridor that allows for pedestrian. It's, is that part of why there, the, the amount of property that we're talking about needs to be what it is?
That's a good point. This is a transportation project. It's connecting Talawanda High School, Talawanda Middle School, and that's why we're getting these multi-million dollar grants because we're connecting those two school, school buildings. And we're also connecting to Butler County RTA. We're also connecting to a proposed Amtrak platform and the city of Oxford sidewalk system at Chestnut and Main. So there are many, many points of connectivity here. That's why it's such a great project.
Okay. Are we ready? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And you can read the last resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with Dynody Energy Service LLC for the procurement of electricity generation services for the city's consumption of a period of 60 months beginning April 2025.
Okay. So moved.
It's been moved and.
Seconded.
Seconded. And is this a replacement substitution?
Just a reminder that if you want to go with a different rate, you'll have to amend it.
Okay.
Well, I think what, what Heather gave you was the one, we, we got three different options. One was for the fossil fuel rate. One was for wind energy like we're using in our electric aggregation program, and then we also got one for nuclear energy. I think what Heather provided you was the one for the wind energy, which is a little higher than the fossil fuel and slightly higher than the nuclear.
Okay.
And, and what we put in the packet had a blank for the rates. So this puts an ordinance in front of you with the rates.
Right. So that's, that was my question of what, what needs to be amended in order to move this forward?
I think you can just replace, make a motion to replace the ordinance that's on the, excuse me, the resolution that's on the agenda with the, the one that was provided to you tonight.
Okay. So, all right, let me find it.
I think it's page 127.
I'm on it. I finally found it. So we've got page 125 of 411, I might add, for those who are interested. And the resolution itself is on page 127. And you'll notice that on the resolution we have before us, there are Xs.
Yeah.
And so those need to be replaced. And staff is recommending we use wind energy, and if that's the case, then I have the, the substitution that someone could make a motion to substitute if one so desires.
So is it just in, in toto or just to read the numbers that?
Yes. It's basically putting in those numbers.
Okay.
And it says a period of 24 months rather than 60 months.
Your Honor, I can, I can give some background if you.
Please.
Want to do the amendment later possibly?
That would be great.
Okay. Five years ago, we negotiated a contract with the same company and actually got lower pricing five years ago than the previous five years. So we've had a sweetheart deal for the last five years where we were paying about four cents per kilowatt hour. And prices for electricity have skyrocketed. So this is not a great time to be renewing a contract, but we have no choice. We did get pricing for fossil-based fuel electricity, wind electricity, and electricity from nuclear power, as city manager stated. The cost difference between those, we buy approximately 5.9 million kilowatt hours of electricity for city uses. About two-thirds of that is used to run the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant. But this aggregation runs all of our buildings, the courthouse, municipal building, all of our public buildings and properties. If you were to use the nuclear option, it would add a surcharge of $8,850 for the total 5.9 million kilowatt hours, so really insignificant amount. If you wanted to have the 100% renewable wind option, that will add $18,290. So again, that's in simple terms, less than a dollar per citizen per year to have the sustainable option. So I hope that puts some perspective on that. So we do recommend the 24-month term. Beyond that, prices skyrocketed and were not advantageous at all. So we're recommending 24 months sustainable wind energy.
Okay.
At the stated price of 7.461 cents per kilowatt hour.
Right.
And then that will also be discounted for street lighting accounts, although we don't buy as much electricity for street lighting because they're, they're all LED now, so we're, our consumption's about half of what it used to be. But that is just under six cents per kilowatt hour.
Okay.
Be glad to answer any questions, but I ask for your approval for this tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, counselors? Would anyone be willing to make this?
Yeah, now that I have my glasses on, I can.
They've just filled in the blanks.
All right. So.
And.
So I, so I move that we amend Resolution 7681 to include.
By, by just replacing.
Okay, by replacing, but, you know, I guess since, since we're here, I think the numbers are.
24 months and.
For 20 more months, the kilowatt hour rate not to exceed 0.07461 cents per kilowatt hour, and for street lighting accounts not to exceed 0.05999 cents per kilowatt hour.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Now, discussion on the motion to substitute.
I, of course, support our choice of renewable. And what's great about this is that if we decide, as I think we hope to do, to begin to generate more solar electricity, this just means we purchase less at the kilowatt hour price here. So this doesn't lock us, I mean, it's a great source of energy. Would be even better if we do renewables ourselves, but this is a great thing.
Okay.
Your Honor, if I could, I should have stated earlier, this is commodity pricing, and I know it's very unusual for us to ask you to do this amendment, but the pricing is only valid for 24 hours. So we need your approval, and then tomorrow morning, we'll ask the city manager to sign the contract, and then we're done. It's a very volatile market.
All right. Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion to substitute? All those in favor of the substitution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Appreciate it. Now, we're on the main motion. Is there any further discussion?
I would just comment that I believe these to be quite reasonable rates overall, you know? I think many people in other parts of the country would be very grateful. But so, and, and this is not, this is what, this is for city use, but we're saving the taxpayers' dollars by finding a good price for renewable energy. Pass that same example there.
Okay. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That resolution is adopted, and we will finally move to ordinances, of which we have two first readings. Please read the first.
An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oxford codified ordinances.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Doug?
Thank you. So the city of Oxford utilizes the services of Walter H Drain Company to codify our city ordinances. This includes ordinances adopted by city council, but it also includes changes to the city's traffic and general offenses code to comply with state law. So the codification process includes making revisions, rearranging, and consolidating into various titles, chapters, and sections. Once adopted by the city council, these revisions are published both electronically and in limited hard copies. So we have on the agenda tonight an ordinance to replace certain sections of the codified ordinance to, to abide by state law.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this exciting ordinance? Okay. Counselors? It's what we do all the time.
Yeah. I think it's good we're keeping up with this because there's a lot of.
Lot of change.
Very obscure sections in there.
And now there's a gift of marijuana section. Did not exist before.
All right. We'll move then to the second one.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3783 supplemental budget ordinance number two to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2025.
Okay. Thank you very much. Heidi, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and counselors. I am bringing to you tonight our second supplemental, so it was discovered that without the transition of this property, we have to pay for the property taxes for the properties that were purchased by ARPA funds. So we are asking for additional appropriation and revenue for, to cover the taxes in the amount of $8,239.46. This amount will be outside of the dedicated ARPA funds. This, we will use the interest earned on those. This, we will use the interest earned on those funds to pay for this.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this particular ordinance? Thank you. Counselors have any questions? Pretty straightforward, okay. And these will come up at our next meeting for a vote. We'll move then to second readings, of which there are several, and you may read the first one.
An ordinance granting request of Matthew and Elizabeth Troy to connect to an existing city water line and sanitary line for 5280 Hillcrest Drive, a 10.98 acre parcel outside the Oxford corporate limits.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mike?
No changes from first reading.
Okay, and we had a discussion last time, if you recall it. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Come on up. Oh, no, you were just stretching. I was gonna say, boy, that was polite, you raised your hand. All right, thank you. That's the kind of move that would, at an auction, buy you property. All right. We will move then to council if you have any comments or questions. Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, we can move to number two.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the Oxford Municipal Code by revising Chapter 7, Business Regulation Code, Chapter 744, revising the tobacco retailer license requirements for the sale of tobacco and paraphernalia products in the City of Oxford.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hi, Sam.
Evening, Mayor, council members. No changes since the first reading?
Okay, thank you very much. Any, well, first, any comments or questions from the public? All right, thank you. Counselors, anything?
I just, whether the staff had had any, I mean, before we move away from what the original ordinance was, which was clearly, you know, not business-friendly, but I think that, you know, the model ordinance was constructed to not allow transferability, clearly interact for health, people are okay with it. But before we move away from that, was there discussion or thought on, do we lose something policy-wise by allowing transferability that we might have gained by maintaining the current ordinance?
Well, I did discuss that with my team, and we had already done quite a bit of research already, and we feel like the benefit outweighs the risk. It does potentially slow down the overall reduction from, we have 23 licensees right now, and the community is set for 15. So it would take quite a bit longer to get to that. Businesses would have to more close voluntarily rather than transfer from one owner to another. But the legal risk to not allowing this transfer to happen probably outweighs that. So it's probably better to just allow this kind of pretty typical land use regulation to allow transfer at the same property. So, but we did take one more look at it, so thanks for, thanks for asking about that.
Thank you, I just, I wanted to know that the thought, the decision is a thoughtful one on our part, and that satisfies me, thank you.
Okay. I wanted to also be transparent that I got a message from a citizen who was concerned about this. Someone who pays attention to a lot of what council does. And once I explained what Sam has explained and what the purpose of it was, there was general agreement that that was, it was a good idea. And a lot of people do not realize that this, the licenses for tobacco are not like the licenses for alcohol, which could be put in safekeeping, which could be transferred to other communities or other businesses. This is allowing it to stay with the property with just a change of ownership. Is that accurate? Did I say it right? Yeah. Okay, any further comment or question?
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. May read the third.
An ordinance replacing Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1101, entitled subdivision regulations and adopting new Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1101, entitled subdivision regulations for the purpose of amending provisions pertaining to minor subdivisions inclusive of those situated along alleys.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the first of the alley motions?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
No changes since the first reading. This one and the next five are all related to alley, the alley moratorium that's been in effect for the past several months. No change since the first reading on this one. This one is about the minor subdivision process corrections, which potentially sometimes do involve lots that are along alleys.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Thank you very much. Counselors, any further questions? All right, please call it.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, we'll move to the fourth one.
An ordinance repealing Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1141, entitled accessory temporary supplemental and environmental regulations and adopting new Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1141, entitled accessory temporary supplemental and environmental regulations for the purpose of incorporating a site plan review process for sites situated exclusively along one or more public alleys.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
This one is the one that has the most changes in it. It's the new process for alley developments, the site plan review process.
Okay, and are there any changes from the first reading?
No changes, all of these, we took out all the strikeout underlined, so it's the clean version. So you can't really tell, just, we were trying to save paper and the length of the packet. So you can't really tell where the changes are unless you went back to the previous council meeting to see what those changes were.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors?
I'd just like to comment, I think that through the process, we achieved something that enables the city through the site plan review to provide a little bit of supervision and, and a role in, because alley development can be complicated. And it can be complicated by contextual factors that are local. So I think that the idea of going through this provides the city an ability to kind of ensure that the development doesn't create public health, safety, and welfare problems, but it also protects the landowner in terms of the ability to have multiple ways of getting through the process. So, you know, I really, this is a little bit different from how we do other sorts of things. And so I hope that it works as intended because I think it enables the development of the alleys, but not in an unregulated way, but doesn't create a burdensome amount of rules or regulations or process. So it's kind of like review light or something like that, and so I think that, I hope it works.
Okay, any other comments, questions? May call the roll.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, we'll move to number five.
An ordinance repealing Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1143, entitled districts and adopting new Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1143, entitled districts for the purpose of referencing a new site plan review process established in Chapter 1141 pertaining to sites situated exclusively along one or more public alleys.
Okay, thank you very much. It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded. Sam?
No changes.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay. Counselors, have any further questions?
Thank goodness for detail-oriented people.
I know.
Our codes, one section ties into another section, and so...
They're all related.
It's all related, and if you mess with one part, you mess with them all. So we have really detail-oriented stuff.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, we can move to number six.
An ordinance repealing Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1149, entitled parking and site access and adopting new Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1149, entitled parking and site access for the purpose of revising residential parking regulations.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
No changes on this one either.
Okay. And just for people's notification, so they know what we're doing, I guess. This is on parking for alley lots, is that correct?
That's correct. The residential parking code did not address alley, alleys. And so this changes, this corrects that, and it also makes a couple other tweaks that would be beneficial for the enforcement and the regulation of residential parking for the mile square area as well.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance?
I just have one question, so...
Please come on up, give us your name.
Sure.
And where you live, and we'll give you five minutes. I know, I have to say that every time.
I know, it gets old, right? So with regards to parking off of the alleyways, so if there's in the mile square an existing alleyway where residents turn into their parking spot because it's been an established parking area, is, are we going to eliminate those? What's, what's the objective?
That's your comment, and we'll get answers later, it's not a Q and A.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pitheridge.
So I mean, it's just, the question, yeah, the question is, how is this going to impact the existing parking?
Good question, thank you very much. Sam, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you. This, these changes are for new alley developments, and so any existing parking would not be impacted. But if, if there's an existing alley development where there's already parking in a house and that, there's a proposal for a new building on that alley lot, then everything on that lot would have to come into compliance with the code. Existing properties that have parking that's directly adjacent or accessed by the alley, there would be no impact on this whatsoever.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Are there other comments from the public? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors, have any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. This ordinance is adopted, we'll move to number seven.
An ordinance repealing Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1129, entitled administration and adopting new Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1129, entitled administration for the purpose of clarifying the site plan reviews are subject to the same notification requirements as are typical for public hearings.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, thank you very much. Sam?
No changes on this one. This one, if, if for some reason it does go to planning commission agenda, there would be notification just like any other public hearing to the adjacent property owners.
I think the property owners appreciate that, thank you very much. Is there any comments from the public on this ordinance or questions? Okay, counselors, call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes, ordinance is adopted. And we move, you know, we have 11 of these, eight.
An ordinance repealing Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1159, entitled definitions and adopting new Oxford codified ordinance, Chapter 1159, entitled definitions for the purpose of amending the definition of frontage to exclude measurement along alleys.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
No changes on this definition correction.
All right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors, have any questions or comments? Call it.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes, ordinance is adopted, and we'll move to number nine.
An ordinance creating new Section 150113 with local amendments to the, sorry, amendments to the Ohio Fire Code of the City of Oxford pertaining to alley developments and fire protection requirements.
Okay, Chief DeFrich?
No changes from the first reading?
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you very much, counselors?
So we need a motion to approve, I would move approval, sorry.
There's so many.
Yeah, there are.
All right, thank you. So it has been moved and seconded, and we've had our staff report. Public is disinterested in discussing it.
I'll second.
I thought we had that, just to make sure. Just to be sure, and any discussion by council?
So I just asked, like, the chief has sat down, like, I think this is really cool that we're moving into requiring sprinkling in properties that need it. And it seems that I'm happy that there's a legal foundation for doing that, amending our local fire code. And so I hope that we may consider that as we think about density in the mile square, that this really alleviates some of the major concerns. So if we do it in alley lots, it seems like it may be a tool we could use in the future elsewhere with other kinds of development.
Yeah, I think if you've seen fires run through building to building, you would appreciate, and I know as a parent, I would appreciate knowing that my children were in apartments in an alley that were sprinkled so that they had a chance to make it. I've gone through the process of dealing with and going to the funerals of students who died in a fire in this community, and I don't ever want to do it again. And I don't want any other mayor to ever have to do it again. And so I'm very strongly in favor of this. As I've mentioned, I think in a previous discussion, we lived in a house in California for 10 years that had sprinkling in every room in the house, and I was thoroughly grateful for it. I know that I paid a little extra for it, but we were safe. And if you've read the news, you know that fires do happen in Southern California, so, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, and we'll move to number 10.
An ordinance approving a preliminary and final plan development application and preliminary subdivision submitted by Habitat for Humanity of Greater Cincinnati for 32 townhomes to be situated on 3.464 acres, currently addressed as 601, 603, and 607 West Chestnut Street, Oxford, Ohio 45056, with conditions.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
There is a change.
Okay.
I know, everyone's been waiting.
You know, we get to the point, we're shocked when that happens, but...
On page 377 of your packet, I did put a note in there stating that the condition, this was a request from the applicant to remove a condition. They had done some feasibility analysis, and I was able to include, I think it made it in there, a email from the engineer, from John Baer, just talking about the difficulty of implementing that request of the planning commission. At the time, when you were in the planning commission meeting, it's kind of hard to consider all the different factors.
This is for the sidewalk?
Correct.
And that's been removed?
It has been removed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, is there anyone, we did motion and second. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address? Okay, thank you very much, counselors. I noticed that two of the three houses have been torn down, so we're moving forward, and I think that's good. And I've seen the publicity for people who are interested in workforce housing. That's what this is about, all right? So, yeah. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Pitheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes, this ordinance is adopted, congratulations. And we'll move to number 11.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision application and plat for the Clarence Place subdivision consisting of 35 lots situated on 3.464 acres, currently addressed as 601, 603, and 607 West Chestnut Street, Oxford, Ohio 45056, with conditions.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?[1777.75] Thank you very much. Any changes on this one?
No changes, other than I just wanted to clarify for the public that the ordinance says 35 lots, but that's because there's three extra lots that are not home lots. It's actually 32 townhomes. So this is the land division portion of the project.
Right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this part? Okay.
I do have a question.
Okay. Come up.
I'm Laura, and I live in Oxford, and between this, did I, and I know this isn't Q and A, so I apologize, but you removed sidewalks, is that, is that, did I just misunderstand?
No. There was a sidewalk originally asked for by planning commission between the back parking area that would go into the middle where the street is, which it was deemed would be improper and unnecessary. So that's all, they do have sidewalks on the street.
Okay.
That's the important thing. All right. Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion from the public? Thank you, Laura. I appreciate your clarifying that. And is there anyone from council who would like to discuss this ordinance?
I mean, I guess I just want to say that I know that there were common comments at the first reading, like, well, what about conditions, and was this, were we, were we treating this somehow different from others? And I think that what we learned is that this, our process can work pretty quickly, you know? I mean, what we are here, we're a combined, planned development and subdivision, preliminary and final in all one stage, and it can go that smoothly when the developer works, what's that?
All the ducks are in a row.
Yeah, when the developer works carefully with the, with staff to produce a really high-quality design, you know? And so I would push back a little bit on, I think there was some expression, you know, I heard the sense that maybe we were waiving standards that we would normally apply, and I believe that this was a high-quality development design, that whether this was private development on, you know, on a private lot or a city-owned development on a, you know, Habitat for Humanity, I mean, I think clearly, given the need for affordable housing, we feel a certain urgency for this kind of development, but I don't think this was treated in any way that...
No corners were cut.
Yeah, no. And I'm really confident this is going to be high-quality development, and in the process, we responded to developer concerns, I mean, developer, neighbor concerns, so I feel really, really good about this, and I'm proud that we were able to do this expeditiously, and I feel like I would encourage private developers who would like to build housing of any kind, especially affordable housing, but any kind, this is a model. We moved relatively quickly through this, because I, it's been said in the past that Oxford, you know, makes it slow or whatever, but I don't feel like that was the case here. So I'm proud of the way this development came out in our process to get here.
Thank you very much. If anybody is watching this on tape and has an interest in workforce housing, I encourage them to go to the public meetings and to find out more about it, because these will be built this year. If there's no other comments, we'll go to the roll, please.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pitherich?
Yes.
Mayor Snavely?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted. Okay. Now we will move to announcements and communications, and I will begin with city manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you. So the city of Oxford has two medical and recreational marijuana dispensaries located within our corporate boundaries. The city expected to receive 36% of the 10% excise tax collected on the sale of recreational marijuana in the city under the city-initiated statute, excuse me, the citizen-initiated statute as a host community. And when I, I think it was right after the first of the year, I inquired from the Ohio Department of Taxation concerning when we might expect to receive a distribution, and I was told that it would require an appropriation from the Ohio Legislature. There are bills proposing to change this distribution, which I think the city, of course, is opposed. Those bills may or may not happen. I think the governor has also suggested that we increase this tax, so I've requested support for maintaining the current disposition to the host communities from Senator Lang and Representative Mullins, and I've also inquired about any information regarding an appropriation under the current law. So I don't think the city would support the state withholding those funds indefinitely, which goes against the citizen-initiated and adopted statute, so I'll keep it posted on that.
Thank you very much.
And also, the city completed its 24, 25 deer management program, and I'm happy to say that this year 10 deer have been harvested, which is up from my belief for last year. So, a couple of other things, we have a couple of other commissions. One is the Municipal Records Commission. Of course, as you know, I serve as the chair of that commission. It also consists of the Finance Director, Law Director, one citizen appointed to the commission, that is, by the city manager, and that is Jackie Johnson, and then Brad Spurlock of the Smith Historical Library also serves as an ex officio member. Heather serves as our, excuse me, our city clerk serves as our secretary for the commission. We met January 21st, and at that meeting, the record commission reviewed and approved a one-time disposal of obsolete records, which is an RC1, for the Service Department, and then several certificates of records of disposal, which is RC3 from various departments. So we do that about every six months. Lastly, we had an investment review committee meeting before our last council meeting, February 4th at 5:00 PM. We met with Ryan Nelson of Red Tree Investment Group, our city's investment advisor, to review the city's investment portfolio as it relates to the city's cash flow and fund balances. The city's investment policy, which was adopted by council in 2007, is primarily focused on safety and security while following state investment laws. Under those controls, the IRC seeks to maximize return on investments in this changing economy. The city's general fund portfolio income has been on the rise since 2021. The net income for fiscal year 2024 was $856,260 and is estimated for 2025 at $940,000. So the interest income from this general fund portfolio is distributed to other city funds based on the available cash amount invested from each fund. The bulk of our investment portfolio is in government agency notes, U.S. Treasury notes, U.S. Treasury bills, and certificate of deposits with over two dozen FDIC insured banks, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Chief Jones?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay.
I just have one thing to say.
What's that?
Heather is a rock star.
I was gonna say, yeah. Thank you.
She made it through a lot. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, chief. Sam? Jessica? Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nothing, mayor.
All right. Thank you. Michael?
I was just going to remind everybody about the Oxford Area Solutions for Housing meeting on Monday, the 24th, at 5:00 at the Presbyterian Seminary. We'll be reviewing the Oxford Point-in-Place count, where we get, put a number on how many unhoused persons we have inside the city. This meeting does include pizza, so if you're interested, please come.
Thank you.
We are really gearing up for Oxford Bee Festival, which will be Saturday, April 12th. I met with both the police and fire chief this morning to, this afternoon, time's not real, to make sure that we will have appropriate safety for all runners, walkers, and participants involved. I also saw a first proof of the finishers medal today, and they look very good. So if nothing else gets you on the trails, you get a shiny medal for walking on the trails, which you might do anyways. So please register and get excited for our spring festival.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Jason?